Hello.
That's the latest as far as I know.
I do need a copy of that, but...
The, the list?
No, but...
Well, I was kinda waiting till six.
No, a copy of the agenda for the public hearing.
It's right there.
Oh, you mean on last, okay.
Oh, I can...
We'll wait on you, they're still coming in.
Is John here tonight?
No, John won't be here.
Okay.
He's in Portland, I think, or somewhere. The function would be to amend the ordinance to, uh, allow, to, to allow apartments as a conditional use in all zoning categories.
Yeah, 'cause they had all those different things, but...
That's, that's the essence of it.
Essence of it, but amend the ordinance as presented.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you. I like the hard copy.
You're gonna have a hard time adapting to that iPad now, ain't you? You're gonna have a hard time adapting to that iPad stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, they gotta go that way, yeah.
They all have been, so I don't know how many of them might sign up.
Okay, well... Yeah, I'd wait on those unless...
They look like they're all living there.
Oh, yes. Yeah, okay.
And then I'll go down there and...
Yeah.
Towards the end of this, who's your last speaker?
Okay.
We're trying to move, there were a bunch of people that went upstairs thinking that they needed upstairs, and of course, that's the alcohol service training, so they're moving around, so it'll take a few minutes to get them all in.
Okay.
I know Jack's in town, I saw him at Home Depot this afternoon.
Let's go ahead and get started, if you don't mind, please. Thank you for being here, glad to see everyone here, nice colors there, I've got red myself, so, uh, we're, uh, we, we got a little business we have to conduct initially, which is a public hearing. Our first public hearing is receiving comments on an amendment to the Canton City Code of Ordinances Development Code as it pertains to apartments. And we have a number of, of folks who have signed up to, to speak. Um, basically what, as I understand, and, and, uh, Mr. Patton can correct me if I'm wrong, what this would do is make the construction of apartments, uh, a, in a, a conditional use in all zoning categories that, uh, they are allowed in now. So, do you have anything else you wanna add to that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, you are correct, uh, this proposed amendment to, uh, Canton Code of Ordinances or Unified Development Code does amend all sections of, uh, the Development Code in regards to multiple family, uh, in all zoning districts, as well as all existing master plan and zoning approval projects that contain multiple family in which all multiple family will require conditional use approval. If, uh, council wishes, I can, uh, read the whole ordinance or, uh, but, uh, basically it does make every, uh, multiple family conditional use.
Right, okay, uh, those wishing to speak and have signed up is, uh, Robert, uh, is that Stenick or? I'm sorry. Come, come on up.
Thanks, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council folks, thanks, I appreciate the time. I wanted to talk to you just a couple minutes about the forty-five hundred people that I think we wanna add to the city and why we wanna add those forty-five hundred. I understand the additional revenue and I understand a lot of people were looking at this to add these forty-five hundred people over a number of years, so this is something that has, I think, just resurfaced because the economy's getting better. Um, I, I wanna play a little game, though, to start off with, uh, that my grandson and I play when he, when it's opposite day. And what I wanna address are the infrastructure issues that we have in this city that an additional forty-five hundred people, we're gonna have a hard time with those people. So, in opposite day, you have to look at things like the traffic, our traffic here is great, we don't have any problem with traffic. Our roads are great, everything has been paved, we don't have any unpaved surfaces, even the lines in the street, they're all paved really, really well. Uh, crime around the city, nobody ever breaks into homes, we don't have any crime in the city. We also don't have little children murdered in apartment complexes like we did a, a few years ago. This perfect city that we live in, also, we have such great water, we never have any problem with our water, we never get any boil, uh, alerts on our water, I never have to turn on my faucet and worry about mud coming out. So, here in opposite day, forty-five hundred additional people wouldn't hurt, but I think we have a big problem with our infrastructure, we don't have a house that in our subdivision can burn to the ground because of the lack of, uh, fire attention. So, I, I'd like you to consider strongly any attempt at any apartments to bring additional forty-five hundred people into this, uh, city without looking at the infrastructure, at least bringing the infrastructure up to the level it needs to handle the existing people that we have now, I would appreciate that greatly. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, okay, uh, Joe, what's the last name?
Mayor.
Mayor, okay, I'm gonna have to get people to print these, I guess, I just can't, I can't read some of it, but go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I actually have two questions concerned, one is, has, has anybody requested, uh, or asked, uh, the council or you mayor, Mr. Mayor, uh, to, or expressed an interest in building apartments in Great Sky? Is this just out of the blue, or is there somebody that's approached either council members or yourself wanting to build apartments in Great Sky?
Uh, I can't, uh, uh, let me, let me set the ground rules, I should've done this at the beginning, this is a public hearing, it's a monologue, not a dialogue, in other words, we, we are listening, we're not getting into a, a discussion at this point. So, you're welcome to make whatever statements you make, but the, the council's not going to respond at this time.
Okay, well, I guess I'll know that next time.
Okay.
Then, uh, I would ask the council to, uh, consider that up in Great Sky, there are homeowners association covenants, and I've thoroughly reviewed in, uh, the homeowners association covenants in Great Sky, there's absolutely nothing in those covenants that would allow for multifamily use for a mixed-use community. Uh, so, the homeowners association covenants would have to be significantly revised to allot for apartments building on Great Sky property within the community of Great Sky. So, what I would say to the council here is I'm about, I'm probably almost a hundred percent sure that if I put together a petition, walked to every house in Great Sky and said, "Are you for or against, will you sign up saying you are against building apartments in Great Sky?", I could pretty much assure you that I'd probably get almost every homeowner to sign that petition. So, there's nobody in Great Sky that I know of, and probably, uh, you know, maybe there's some, but I, I would, I would offer to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor, that it would be an extreme minority that would want to have apartments within our community. So, please, uh, consider that when, uh, when you're doing any deliberations to authorize, uh, apartments that might be built in Great Sky, thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Mal, Malhiot, Malhiot, am I getting close?
Good luck with the pronunciation, it's phonetically pronounced Myit, M-Y-I-T, don't forget what you see, it's M-A-L-H-I-O-T, but it's pronounced M-Y-I-T.
It looks like M-A-H, M-A-L-H-I-O-T?
That is the correct spelling.
Okay, but the wrong pronunciation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Matthew Myit, I live in Great Sky, two oh three Daybreak Rush, I've been there for five to seven years, rented for a couple and then purchased a home. I come before this, this governing body and thank you, Mayor, and, and ladies and gentlemen of the council and city staff for the opportunity to have the opportunity to speak to you. And I see very vaguely, because of the lighting in here, a public comment on amending the city coordinates for conditional apartments. Well, I beg of you to rezone it for single-family and prohibit apartments, end the discussion, end the problem. Uh, I heard from other Great Sky folks and they were saying that if we put a petition, well, we did, we put a petition and we have a hundred and eighty-one signatures from residents of Great Sky saying no apartments, not only for the aesthetics of Great Sky, but that would drive down single home values, thus reducing the millage, thus reducing your tax income, maybe offset by the apartments, but then you have the infrastructure that you have to support. I fully understand the master plans were developed twenty years ago and the economy was going this way and then it tanked. And this body, this city, was left with a lot of infrastructure that they ended up having to invest money in fixing roads in Great Sky that should've been the developer. Well, when the developer goes bankrupt and runs away, who's left? You guys. What guarantee is there that that won't happen if the apartments or anything else the city does? Apartments in Great Sky would reduce the home values of the single-family homes. I don't think a single residence in Gr- a resident in Great Sky was ever told at the time of purchase, "Oh, by the way, you may have an apartment down the block." I'm not saying realtors are not under obligations for full disclosure, but it has been the exact opposite. I'd like to take one second and ask those from Great Sky to stand up, because there's a lot of us, we wanna show you the support for absolutely stopping multifamily homes in Great Sky. I'm gonna leave you with two rhetorical questions, one, what can you legally do to prevent it, and two, what will you do to prevent it? Thank you, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. I think I can pronounce this, Elias Henry.
Thank you, Mayor and council and staff, um, he really spoke, well, everybody's spoken quite eloquent, eloquently about the issue here, um, myself and my husband and the rest of the people who have been able to come here tonight, um, the majority that I have heard, including my husband and myself's concerns, are what, uh, previous, uh, homeowners spoke of. We have concerns about home values, my husband and I moved into Great Sky in May of last year, and we moved to Great Sky because it's like a getaway, it's peaceful, it's quiet, there's a big community feeling there, and I'm not saying that adding apartments would derail the community feeling, but we have issues with the fact that it would affect our home values. I also have issues personally with the HOA, um, it would be a really sticky situation if you had to have apartments inside a community like that to enforce the rules and regulations. As those of us who pay the HOA fees and pay for those amenities, it would be highly unlikely to enforce those upon those who would rent apartments, because most people who live in apartments, they're, they're transient, so they don't stay there for long periods of time, so even if an apartment complex or community said, "Well, you know, we'll throw that into their rent", I just have real concerns that that still would not, A, work, and it wouldn't be beneficial to our community as a whole. Um, again, he did speak of the petition, we have over a hundred signatures, I'm sure we could get more if we went door-to-door, that's strictly been an online presence petition at this time. Um, but I do have great support for our, from our fellow homeowners in Great Sky, and while one may make an argument, well, there are people in Great Sky who rent homes, and I completely understand that, but I think bringing in a multi-development complex with many numerous apartments would just not be beneficial, and also given the fact that we have two apartment facilities right down the street from our house, so I feel like that area is already saturated with apartments as it stands, and if Canton felt the need to put apartments in, I feel that there are other possible prospective places that might better benefit from that, but we really do not want that to be in our community of Great Sky, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bob Rug.
Mr. Mayor, council, uh, what, the concerns that have been expressed are, are pretty universal. Uh, when the Great Sky development was first presented, uh, by a developer who is now defunct and gone, the pods that were designated for apartments, um, really didn't come to too many people's attention, there weren't residences in Great Sky. Great Sky didn't have a voice, but today, there are over four hundred and fifty single-family residences, and Great Sky does have a voice. And we just want to encourage council to put this conditional use permit into play, and additionally, whenever the master plan comes up to be revisited, that it's our hope that those pods now designated for multifamily will be redesignated for single-family, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's all we have signed up for the public hearing, uh, on, on that issue, so, yes, you must've signed the wrong one. Okay, uh, uh, if, come on up, come on up, Larry. We, we'll strike you off of this one and put you on the other one, okay? Larry Haygood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the council. Before you start throwing things at me, hear me out, please. I'm glad the people of Great Sky are here, because maybe they'll understand what I'm talking about. I'm a carpenter and a builder by trade, I use a lot of different tools. I have a problem, a plumbing problem, I fix it with tools out of my toolbox. If something requires saws or a hammer, I'll fix it by getting tools out of my toolbox. I can usually fix anything that I need to with the tools that I have. That brings me to why I'm here, the conditional use permit is a tool that you don't need. After reading the paper and talking with the mayor and city manager, it appears to me that the target of the permit is Great Sky, the Bluffs, and River Green. It seems that the city already has the tools they need to fix the situation without possible collateral damage to other partials. Upon my discussion with the mayor and city manager, it became clear to me, or I began to understand, that the city can already change zoning as needed. I suggest that the city use the tools it has and meet with the homeowners and the developers in these targeted communities and fix their situations, and eliminate the possibility of collateral damage to the other partials. Plus, it's one thing less for the city council to have to deal with, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, anyone else there that, uh, thought they signed up for the public, uh, hearing, uh, on this, this issue regarding apartments? Okay, then we will close the public, uh, input portion or public hearing portion of this, uh, and we will discuss this in council meeting on our regular agenda when we get, get to that issue. All right. So now we will call our regular, uh, our regular meeting to order. Um, if you would, please all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow, Father, we thank you for this day, the beautiful sunshine you provided, and we ask that you be with all of our guests here tonight. We, uh, usually don't have such a good crowd, but, uh, we're glad to see many people involved in the city of Canton. We all come with one common goal, that is to make Canton and our surrounding a better place to live. We ask that you be with us and watch over us, help us get through this meeting and make the right decisions for each one of our citizens, all these things we pray in your name, amen.
Amen. We would like to welcome everyone here tonight, and our first, uh, item of business is that we have an employee recognition accomplishments and commendations, and I believe, uh, Chief Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm, I'll keep this brief, we don't get a long agenda tonight. Um, I think it's important here at the city, and I start off by saying this all the time, it's important here at the city for our community to, uh, meet our new employees, uh, also to see, uh, some accomplishments from our employees and some commendations that our employees have received. So, uh, first, um, if I can have Mr. Alec Robles, uh, come forward. Mr. Robles, um, was, uh, employed several weeks ago, he, um, just recently graduated from Kennesaw State University with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Uh, Alec's gonna, um, start, uh, or has already started as our civilian code enforcement, uh, officer, so he'll be working with our two code enforcement officers, uh, to provide code enforcement, uh, a lot of administrative services, uh, for here, uh, the residents and the citizens of, uh, the city, so, uh, I would just like to welcome him to, uh, the department. Next, we have, um, an employee accomplishment, uh, if I can have Sergeant Jesse Hamilton step forward. Sergeant Hamilton just went through a promotional process where, back on February the twenty-second, uh, of this year, he was promoted to the rank of corporal, excuse me, second, to the rank of sergeant in the, uh, Uniform Patrol Division. Uh, he'll now act as one of the ship commanders, um, he is one of the up-and-coming leaders in the agency, uh, went through a pretty intense, uh, promotional process, and, uh, we, um, appreciate and really, uh, enjoy having him here, and again, he's one of the up-and-coming leaders at the department, so, congratulations to Sergeant Hamilton. I have two more items, um, really quick, uh, these, uh, next two groups of officers, employees, um, received several weeks ago, received some, uh, commendations, um, for, uh, what I would like to say are, it was, uh, several situations that, uh, acts of valor. Um, each one of them is gonna say it was a part of their, their job, that's what their, uh, their profession, that's what they're charged to do, which it is, to protect our community, to engage with our community, to build relationships with our community, but also, um, protect some, uh, members of our community from themselves that are going through issues and problems, um, while, uh, keeping, um, them safe as well as our officers, and we've got two incidents, uh, where, where that occurred here recently. Um, first, valor is defined as boldness, determination, and facing great danger, strength of mind or spirit that enables a person to encounter danger with firmness, heroic courage, and bravery. Um, if I can have, and again, I'll, I'll keep this as brief as I can. If I can have Sergeant Stephen Delman, Sergeant Jesse Hamilton, Sergeant James McPherson, and, um, Officer Jose Soto, he is in training, was not able to make it, but, uh, if I can have these, uh, these, uh, sergeants step forward real quick. Back on, uh, Monday, February the twentieth of this year, our officers were dispatched, um, to, uh, Brown Street here in the city. Uh, the call was a female, a very distraught suicidal female, um, had, uh, cut herself several times and would not let anyone near her to help render aid. Um, our officers, uh, got on the scene, were able to set up a quick perimeter and began trying to de-escalate the situation and talk to her and talk to her and talk to her some more. Um, and, uh, the, the individual, uh, was not receptive to the officers at all, um, and, uh, they took quick action at that point, were able to subdue her, uh, quickly subdued her, uh, had to use, uh, one of our taser devices, but quickly, uh, subdued her. but quickly subdued her, were able to get the weapon away from her, and now she has sought help. But these officers put themselves in harm's way, and I just wanted to publicly commend them for a job well done. Next, Assistant Chief Steve Maryfield, Sergeant Ben Gilliland, Officer Jimmy Butler, and Officer Kyle Smith. If I can have you step forward, please. This incident occurred on Tuesday, January 24th. It was around 4:00 PM. Our officers, this group of employees, was dispatched to West Mister Drive here in the city. And a concerned family member from Atlanta, hadn't heard from his sister in about a day, knew that when he hadn't heard from her, she was very sick, and was concerned and called basically for a welfare check. When our officers arrived, we could see the cars were there, looking in the window, you could see her purse was there, cell phones. So we knew that the person was there and may have required immediate medical attention. Officers were able to find a window, make entry in through a open window in the back, made their way through the house, making sure everything, and trying to locate her. Eventually, when they got to a bedroom that had upstairs that was noted to be hers, they heard the TV was on, and they continued to try to make verbal contact and were not able to. So fearing that something tragic had happened to the citizen, the bedroom door was forced open, and the citizen, who ended up being very delirious because she had various serious flu symptoms and some other medical issues, was standing at the bed and was continuously trying to tell her that we're the police, we're the police, but she's standing at the foot of the bed pointing a gun at our officers. Our officers used extreme restraint and were able to talk her into putting the weapon down after several minutes of her pointing the weapon at our officers, and were able to get the weapon away from her and get her immediate medical attention. And I wanted to publicly commend these officers for, again, to me, it is an act of valor and courage that they were to put themselves in harm's way with a weapon pointed at them and be able to protect the citizen. That is our charge. So join me in commending these individuals here.
Thank you, Chief. We are extremely proud of our police force here in Canton, and congratulations to these policemen here. Thank you for doing what you do for the city of Canton. I'm pleased now to recognize some of the Cherokee Youth Basketball Championship teams, grade seven and up, who are, many of them are with us here tonight, and I would like to ask the players, if they would, to come down and just line up from that podium over that way, if you would, please. Just come on down, and now we'll read a little bit of information about what these guys have accomplished here. Yeah, start off just that side. Okay, let me read something here. Tonight, the council, the city manager, and I would like to recognize our local teams who recently captured the championship titles in the 2017 Cherokee Youth Basketball Tournament. This tournament is an exciting event for our community because it wraps up a five-month season. This program itself is so popular among our county's youth that it has grown to become the largest recreational basketball program in the state of Georgia. We are so grateful for the Cherokee Youth Basketball staff and volunteers who serve the children in Cherokee County. The people who make this program possible provide an environment where our youth can enhance their learning about self-discipline, teamwork, and good sportsmanship. I think we can all agree that these values are important to the development of future leaders and resilient communities. The student athletes before us have absorbed these lessons, endured rigorous physical and emotional challenge, and excelled at competitive play on the basketball court. What is even more remarkable about the teams represented here tonight is that they all feed into Cherokee High School. Well done, Canton players and parents. Now, Olympic athletes know that winning is not about beating the competition, but rather reaching and exceeding your own goals. This knowledge gives them strength to continue their training and participation in future events when they're not the leader in their sport. Nevertheless, when victory is obtained, Olympic athletes take time to celebrate and reflect upon their success, and this is why we are here today. I hope you will join me in congratulating the young men with us this evening. Now for any public service announcements that we may have. Ms. McGruder, do you have any?
Thank you very much. The Cherokee County Historical Society has a preservation awards banquet Friday, March 17th, at the Northside Cherokee Conference Center. The temporary exhibit at the History Museum, Doughboys and the Homefront, the Great War in Cherokee County, continues through April. At the Cherokee Arts Center, Cherokee County School District Student Art Shows, the second in the series, is going on March 21 through 25. The reception would be Thursday, March 23rd, is open to the public at no charge. The student artwork in Cherokee County is outstanding. I highly recommend that each of you go to the Arts Center and see the works of these students. The Arts Center is open Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday through Friday, 11 to 5, and some Saturdays, 11 to 5. You need to call the Arts Center to find out what Saturdays they're open, if that's the day for you. Canton Theater, Broadway Bound Productions presents Paradise, a premium show written by Thomas Reiser through March 19th. March 24th, Kent Raider, known as the world's cleanest comedian, will present a one-night show with his thoughts on life, marriage, and hunting. Tickets for all shows are available online or by calling the box office. The Canton Main Street Program has the first First Friday of the season on April 7th. The First Friday programs begin at 6:00 and end at 9:00, so welcome to downtown Canton on the first Fridays of each month through October. There's food, live music, and usually a classic car show. It's a family event. The theme for April is Cadillacs and Blue Suede Shoes with the band Loose Shoes. Vintage Cadillacs will be on display adjacent to Canton Park.
Any others? Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, now we will have the consideration to approve our agenda, and I will need to amend that initially to include an executive session following this meeting to discuss potential litigation, and we will not be coming back out to take any action after that executive session. So when the meeting is adjourned into executive session, you might as well go home at that point, because we won't be back out making any decisions. Are there any other changes or amendments that need to be made to the agenda?
Motion to approve as amended.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. All right, in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the March 2nd council meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose no. All members voting for the motion. Now we will enter our, what we refer to as a 10-minute public input period. We rarely cut people off, I'll say that. I think I've only cut one off that went on for on and on and on and on and on, and actually began to repeat themselves very much, so I did ask them if they would come back at the next meeting and start again. But anyway, I would ask that when you come up and I call your name, I'd like for you to state your name, state your street address, I don't care if it's a number or not, just state what street you live on and the city that you live in, if it's Canton, Woodstock, Ball Ground, or wherever, you know, just would like to know. And so we will begin. Carol Mudd.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. My husband and I live on 725 Brook Road. It's actually in White in Cherokee County.
White, okay. Thank you.
My husband and I have been volunteers at the Cherokee Animal Shelter for seven, for nine years. Cherokee County Animal Shelter is a government facility that we all pay money into through our taxes. It takes in approximately 4,000 animals a year, and those animals come from the city of Canton as well as other areas in Cherokee County. One of two of the most deplorable and heartbreaking times that I've experienced at the shelter was when the shelter took in the puppy mill case two years ago. It took in over 400 mothers. Seeing so many mothers in those little rabbit hutches who'd never been touched or loved is incredibly heartbreaking. None of those mothers had had medical care, and they all lived in misery and confinement, all because of someone wanting to make money. And it cost the county incredible dollars just to take care of those animals, to get them healthy enough to eventually be adopted. The second heartbreaking time is repeated over and over again, even today, when I help potentials adopters who come to the shelter and tell their story about buying a puppy they paid many, many dollars for through a pet store or Craigslist, only to have the animal be sick because of the inbreeding and the poor medical care, and of course, the animal eventually dies very, very young. It's not just about the animals here, it's about the owners and the families who spend so many dollars trying to save those animals, and the heartbreak for those families when those animals die such a sad death. So it's not only animals who are suffering here, it's the families in our community. Success has come when a potential adopter comes in and says, "I've already had a puppy mill dog. I know what it's like, but now I'm ready for a rescue dog or a shelter dog." And they know that they're healthier and happier animals, and we treat them with so much care. The city of Canton can help all of us by sending, by hearing these positive stories, and by passing on this ordinance and being a role model for our state. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this Sean Davis? Is that correct? Okay, just state your address and city and street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean Davis. I'm actually just down the road from you in Marietta, Georgia, off of Barrett Parkway in that area. I'm here tonight representing the Pet Industry Joint Advisory Council out of Virginia, actually. We're an association representing hundreds of retailers, suppliers, manufacturers, wholesalers, pet hobbyists, among others, and we're here to speak, obviously, in opposition to the ban on retail sales of pets on many grounds. First, you're depriving consumers, your customers, of the choice of where they buy their pet. These bans have proven they do nothing to reduce consumer demand. They only drive demand elsewhere. I can understand how San Francisco, Philadelphia, and other progressive communities can deprive these consumers, your voters, of that right and attack our free market system, but I'm a bit surprised here in Canton, Georgia, that we're having this discussion. The second reason for objecting is that your ordinance is punitive in that it does not have any relation to the problem that you're espousing or trying to address, and that being high-volume dog breeding facilities. We heard about them just a moment ago, and we all know there's bad apples in every industry. But you're not banning facilities, you're banning pet stores, and there's a big difference there. What you're doing is denying a small pet shop owner from being able to open a shop, sell a handful of dogs, sell the products that go with those dogs, dog food and so forth, even if the dog comes from a great source with great inspection records, you're still banning it arbitrarily. The third reason for objecting is that the ban is overly broad and goes beyond what I think you intended. And what I mean by that is we believe the ordinance actually prohibits licensed pet dealers, which we'll speak about in just a moment, which are small breeders, among other things, from selling dogs. Your ordinance defines a pet shop as a retail establishment, yet that term is not defined anywhere in your ordinance. It only simply says that a pet shop is a retail establishment where dogs and cats are sold to the general public at retail, yet retail establishment is not defined. And so when you look at the pet dealer definition in the state statutes, what you see as a pet dealer is any person, this is Department of Agriculture, has regulation over this, has authority over it. It means any person who sells dogs or cats as pets. Further, if these persons sell these animals and have a business license issued by a local government or has a sales tax number, they are a pet dealer, even if they sell less than 30 animals. So you've got folks out in your community that are known as pet dealers. I've checked, I pulled up the Department of Agriculture database, you've got 20 in Cherokee County, and a handful of those are right here in the city of Canton. These are pet dealers who don't necessarily have a shop right here on your square, yet they're selling retail to the general public. Sounds an awful lot like your ordinance, and you're about to possibly shut them down, which creates a taking situation. And these are small mom and pops that you have to be concerned about. And so in closing, we would say that your ordinance is ill-advised on many fronts. It's not appropriate to ban commerce at all or the sale of what are legal products. It does not accomplish your stated intent, and the ordinance possibly closes down pet dealers, which you didn't intend to do, and sets up an illegal taking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Peggy Davis. I live on, in the Stacy Brook Park, just off of Highway 20. I'm a Canton resident of nine years, a Cherokee resident of 20 years, a realtor who has sold and promoted Cherokee County for the past 12 years, and a huge pet lover. My family and I not only have two dogs and one cat, but various reptiles and fish, all have been purchased throughout the years from Petland and PetSmart. I'm here to ask you not to support the ban on retail puppies and kittens. I am one of those citizens who have personally bought three I am one of those citizens who have personally bought three dogs from Petland over the course of 15 years. Plus, two of my family members have bought one each for their family. These puppies have all been healthy and have been a significant part of our family. Petland consultants, for all of these purchases, were the ones who educated me on the care and training of the puppies. They also provided information on how to obtain vet care, suggested neutering and spading for various reasons, as you can imagine, and how to feed and socialize. I went several times to the store and socialized all the time with those puppies. They get total socialization. It's incredible. If anyone has ever been there, if you have not, I would recommend you go. Right now, all of our puppies are alive and healthy and have brought great joy to us. Prior to buying our first puppy from Petland, we bought a puppy from a breeder that was up in northwest Georgia. Even though that puppy was nice and that puppy lived and was well cared for, they never helped us with any, they did not have vet care. They didn't follow up with us, they didn't help me with any training. The breeder had no idea if we were going to be good caretakers or not. Citizens like me should have a choice of where they get their pets from. I'm an individual who prefers certain breeds that are virtually impossible to get at a shelter. I also comment at times, families with young children like my children were at the time, it may feel safer for a mother or a father for their children to get a puppy to raise that you know what their personality and temperament will be versus not getting a puppy or a dog from a shelter that you don't know what they've been exposed to. We live in the land of the free, where all individuals are different, and hence have different preferences of the pet they like and where they would like to purchase. I do believe we are all here for the same thing, and that is the welfare of the puppies. It is my belief that the better way to handle the welfare of the puppies is to attack the disease and not the symptom. Let's go directly to all the breeders and watch over them through our various organizations. There's always going to be a demand for puppies with or without your ban. By banning retail, it only promotes those so-called puppy mills to sell in parking lots, Walmarts, et cetera like that, with no one watching over them. To sum up, it is my right to choose where I get my pet, not any form of government. If we all want to make an impact, let's work towards the checks and balances of the breeders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, glad to be here tonight. My name is Mike Davis. I'm a constituent of Canton, and I live on Ashford Estates Parkway.
Thank you.
I do business in the city of Canton, and all my family does business in Canton, so I have a very good interest in our well-being here. And I think it would be a mistake tonight to think that everybody in this room is not an animal lover. We all are, of course. And we've all joked at some time or another that every animal in our household probably lives a better life than we do because we treat them so well. So we all share in the right of protection for animal rights, but also the rights of people like me. I'm a proud owner of two puppies. I'm proud to say that I purchased them from a local pet store. They came from a USDA licensed facility, and they met care requirements that don't exist in the county of Cherokee. They were healthy, well-nourished, and socially-connected puppies, and to this day, they're still a very gifted family member in the Davis household. But I'm troubled by this ban proposal, and respectfully request that you table it until the constituents of the city are made aware of it and it is open for public debate. I believe in my freedom of choice, as Peggy said, and generally do not support any anti-business measure by anybody outside the county or city. By the council's own admission, the idea for the ban on puppies and cats was conceived by the daughter of the mayor, who she works for the society, American Society of the Prevention for Cruelty of Animals, the ASPAC. That is a nationally renowned organization. It was not conceived to solve a problem of Canton or Cherokee County. And I'm aware of a Facebook group titled "Georgia County and City Ordinance Support" to the ban of retail sales of cat and dogs. It's on Facebook, where the city of Canton council members are openly providing information to supporters of this ordinance with insider information that flies in the face of the ethics ordinance of this city. Also, preemptive newspaper articles have been let, like the ones on March 3rd and today in the Tribune, that further positions the council as a major role player in the agenda of the Facebook group. The ethics ordinance states in part, and let me quote, "It is essential to the proper administration and operation of the city that the members of its governing authority be and give the appearance of being independent and impartial." The manner in which this city council seeks to pass this ordinance is not in keeping with the spirit of that ethics ordinance. I respectfully request that you table this ordinance and open it for public debate at a later date. Agreeing to this request will allow each of the council members to get fully educated on the issue. In an interest of time, I ask all those in support of my statements to please stand.
Megan Wargula? Is that correct? Wargula? Okay. Okay.
I'm Megan Wargula Harbin from Woodstock, Burdock Trace.
Thank you.
I'm a native of Georgia. Mayor Hobbit and city council members, thank you so much for your time. I'm an avid dog lover and realize that the best way we can make change is through education. So after praying what I could do for our companion animals, I decided to write a book series outside of my day job that would entertain and educate young people about responsible pet ownership and animal welfare issues. One of the issues I became educated on through my years of passionate dog ownership is the retail sale of puppies. I knew this was a bad thing, but I didn't realize how bad until I really dug in and did my research. While education is key, sometimes we need the help of our leadership to bring issues like this to the forefront, and I'm so glad you've done that with the proposed retail ban on pet stores that sell puppies and kittens. I am not anti-breeder, far from it. I have two dogs that I bought from a reputable breeder. I met the parents of my dogs at the home where they live and made sure I was purchasing from someone who had the best interests of the dogs first, something you cannot do when you buy retail. I had to sign a contract that I would spay and neuter my dogs, which would prohibit further over pet population. And at any time for the life of my pets, if I could no longer care for them or did not want them, I could return them. That's a responsible breeder. Responsible breeders are breeding for healthy dogs and not overbreeding, which can cause genetic issues. Commercial breeders breed for profit, period. Commercial breeders don't care about the health of their breeding dogs or the puppies, just as long as they are viable enough to sell. One thing that struck me most in my research is that some puppy millers, when faced with euthanizing one of their stock, don't want to waste money on a bullet. So instead of shooting a dog, they will use a method like jamming a pipe down the dog's throat. I know, it's unthinkable. One dog, Harley, who was named Hero Dog of the Year in 2015, lost his eye because the breeder power washed the cages with the dogs in them. Yeah, that's pretty horrifying. Along with this lack of care and interest in the animals' well-being, we're putting consumers at risk. People who buy from pet stores are paying exorbitant amounts for these dogs, sometimes taking out credit just to buy them. And some are faced with large vet bills when the puppies become sick due to where they came from, the conditions they are in during transport, or genetic issues that arise later in their lives. Finally, there's the overpopulation problem, something we are all too familiar with. According to the ASPCA, each year approximately 1.5 million shelter animals are euthanized, 670,000 dogs, and 860,000 cats. Why would Canton want to contribute to this overpopulation problem by allowing pet stores to operate within its city? If a city like Canton passes a law that bans the retail sale of puppies and kittens, you are not only protecting your citizens, consumers, and the animals, but you are also showing that Canton cares when it comes to animals. I look forward to seeing Canton blaze this trail and become the first city of what I hope is many in the state of Georgia to ban the retail sale of puppies and kittens. Would everyone who supports me please stand up? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Berger.
Hi, my name is Deborah Berger, and I actually live in the city of Dunwoody, but I represent the Humane Society of the United States for the whole state of Georgia, including Canton. And I really want to thank all of you for considering this very progressive ordinance, and Canton may be joining hundreds of other cities in the state that have seen the wisdom of a new business model. And that's the point here. There's a lot of emotion around this issue because there are so many of us who care so much about animals, but from a purely practical perspective, these type of bans are not anti-business and they don't put people out of business. There are examples all over this country of pet stores that have changed to a model where they either sell supplies only, which is an endless business if your community has pets, and/or they, some have actually gone to where they sell rescue, they sell rescue dogs, and they act as an adoption center. And there's a chain in Philadelphia that we helped convert that has eight stores, it's called Pets Plus Natural, and they agreed to try it at one store, just to bring adoptable dogs in, and rather than selling a few dogs a week at thousands of dollars, they now sell a few, a lot more. And of all, the best part about that, besides how many animals it's helped, is it's established them as a really good friend to the community and their business is better than ever. So I just want to emphasize that point, that this is not an anti-business move, it's a modern business model. The city of Canton, you pay towards animal control in Cherokee County, and it's very expensive to care for animal control, and you should have the right to decide if you want to bring more animals into your community. And one last thing real quickly is, one of the proudest things that you made cite in the United States is done in Georgia, is we worked for several years to pass a law called "The Cost of Animal Care." And what that law did was shift the burden of cost off of counties and municipalities in animal cruelty cases and back on to the owner. And during the process, we did a lot of research on what does it cost to operate shelters. And just three cases alone in Cherokee County in 2013 and 2014 ran over $200,000 in cost. Now they wouldn't have those, but it is very expensive. So you have this right, and thank you so much for considering it, and please remember this is not anti-business.
Tamara Feliciano.
My name is Tamara Feliciano. I practice law in Alpharetta, Georgia, off North Point Parkway, but I appear in Superior Court all over the place, including Cherokee County. So I've had the great pleasure of spending some time in Canton, and I think it's a great place to practice. I represent consumers who have purchased sick and dying animals from pet stores, specifically Petland. I represent consumers who were told that their animal was healthy and came from a local responsible breeder, when really, it came from an out-of-state puppy mill. I represent consumers who incurred thousands in veterinary costs after purchasing an animal that they were told was healthy. I represent consumers who could not afford the price tag, the $3,000 to $6,000 price tag associated with these pet store puppies, so they financed their purchase through Petland in-store financing. Now, the salesperson would tell them that it was six months' same as cash, which wasn't true, it was actually a 29% interest rate. I represent consumers who were told at the time of their purchase that their dog were AKC-registered purebreds, only to find out years later that their dogs were mutts that you can find at a shelter. I represent consumers, I've had to console after they prematurely lost their dog that they were promised was healthy when they purchased it, just days after purchase. And I represent consumers who had to explain to their children why they lost a pet store puppy, why that pet store puppy died in their lap days after purchase. Here's what I know. I know that these consumers didn't travel down a dark, twisted alleyway, arrive at an unmarked door, and give a secret handshake to get into the door of the pet store. They drove down streets that their lawmakers drive down every day, they parked in a shopping center that their lawmakers see every day, and they walked in to the open door of a business that they assumed was legitimate. And they made this assumption for the same reason. They assumed that their government would protect them from a business who was operating like this. They never dreamed that an establishment can operate in their community that would do this to them, because their elected officials would surely prevent that from happening. Make no mistake about it, by doing nothing, by not considering this ordinance, you're telling your constituents that these type of business practices are okay. I want to thank this council for considering this progressive ordinance, because you're sending the message that it's not okay, and you're not going to accept it in your community, and that is the absolute right message to send to your consumers, and I know because I represent Canton consumers as well. You heard Sean Davis, the lobbyist for the pet dealing industry, talk about the verbiage of your ordinance. I'm a lawyer, I practice here. I think there's nothing wrong with the language of your ordinance. I think it's well-written, I think it's on par with the over 200 other jurisdictions that have adopted similar language. And what I took from that was a concern about takings clause, which is the constitutional argument. Yes, pet stores have sued cities and local governments for adopting these kind of ordinances, that's true, and that's what he's telling you when he brings up the word takings. But they lose, they lose every time, because you have a legitimate interest in protecting your community from these types of deceptive business practices. They lose because you have a legitimate interest in lowering the burden on your local shelters. And they lose because you have a legitimate interest in saving taxpayer dollars. Don't for a second let the pet stores make you think that you're putting them out of business. They can operate, they can sell anything that they want to, just not dogs and cats. You're protecting your community, and that is a legitimate interest that nobody should be able to tell you not to take on. I just, as an attorney, I have to note, I do have evidence to support everything I'm saying. And I do want to leave you with just a couple things. Petland Kennesaw, just down the street, I have the USDA inspection reports for breeders that we're selling to Petland Kennesaw. They are just as horrific as some of our testimony has suggested, and those are USDA-licensed facilities. Don't make a difference between a puppy mill and a USDA facility, because sometimes they're one in the same, and they are selling to pet stores inside of the state of Georgia. And it's not just Petland, it's all other pet stores as well. There's a lot of other pet stores that are receiving shipments from the same irremutable dogs. There’s a lot of other pet stores that are receiving shipments from the same irreputable breeders that Petland is, and I know this because I’ve looked at the GDA records myself. I have a financing agreement that shows you your 29% interest rate on a purchase price of $4,000. And I have the GDA inspection reports for Petland Dunwoody, which show you that Petland Dunwoody, just last month, was cited for inhumane care and failure to maintain sanitary environment. So everything that I’ve said is supported, and I applaud you for taking on this progressive ordinance, and I hope that you will pass it, because I think it is the number-one thing that you can do to stop puppy mills from out-of-state and to protect your consumers all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Palmberg.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rachel Palmberg, and I work off of South Atlanta Road in Atlanta. I am here on the behalf of Best Friends Animal Society, and we are in full support of a retail pet sales ordinance for Canton. The fact is, puppy and kitten mills are in business to supply pet stores. Responsible breeders don’t sell to pet stores because they don’t sell to third parties and because it’s not financially viable. And this pledge never to sell a puppy to a pet store can be found in every reputable breeder’s code of ethics, including all of the parent breed clubs on the AKC’s website. Although the commercial breeders who do sell to pet stores may be regulated by the USDA, the federal care standards do not ensure quality breeding or humane life for animals. For instance, dogs are allowed to be confined to tiny wire cages only six inches larger than the dog’s, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for their entire lives, forced to breed every cycle without ever being taken out for even a moment to stand on solid ground. These are the dogs producing puppies for local pet stores. This kind of substandard breeding means that unsuspecting buyers are often faced with a pet having physical, genetic, and psychological problems that result in many of them being surrendered to overcrowded shelters with the emotional toll, and the vet bills become more than the buyer can manage. So this is not just a humane issue, it’s a consumer protection issue. And yet, there is a viable alternative, which is for those stores to stop supporting puppy and kitten mills by transitioning to an adoption model, as thousands of pet stores across the country are already doing very successfully. So this ordinance would not prevent pet stores from doing business. It would not impact responsible hobby breeders who continue to sell directly to the public, and of course, it would not prevent anyone from adopting an animal. Shelters and rescue groups are full of amazing dogs, cats, puppies, and kittens looking for homes, and yet, those are the animals dying in the highest numbers in our shelters simply because there isn’t enough space to house them all. This ordinance is a fair, effective, and reasonable way to prevent an endless supply of poorly-bred pets from being imported into the community so that consumers are protected and fewer animals will have to suffer in order to supply the retail pet trade and to relieve the burden on shelters and therefore the taxpayers by getting companion animals out of those facilities and into retail settings where they have a greater chance of being adopted by the public. That’s why more than 200 other communities across the country have already enacted this ordinance, and we urge Canton to join them. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Phillips.
I’m Melanie Phillips. I am a professional dog trainer and owner of Delightful Dog Professional Play Care. We do boarding, grooming, training, and daycare. My business is in Marietta, and I live in Acroth, just right across from Cherokee County. I was asked to come and discuss both facts about puppy mills, which breed puppies for sale at pet stores, and also state my information as a professional dog trainer of over 10 years, what I observe from those puppies that we’ve had in our facility. That said, some facts from the study done by the Humane Society Veterinary Medical Association. It’s a report on puppy mills. I’m going to summarize a very tiny bit of this, but it states what makes a breeding facility a puppy mill. Specifically, puppy mills focus on quantity of dogs versus quality of the breed. As you’ve heard stated before, there’s indiscriminate breeding, continuous confinement, and various other things I’m not going to repeat since you’ve heard these things, and we all have facts to support that. Commercial breeders sell puppies for resale. They breed them, they sell them, so that they can go to pet stores. They all say that they are licensed by the USDA under the Animal Welfare Act. True. However, that licensure does not equal compliance with the Animal Welfare Act, so they’re not under the same care there. Commercial breeders often claim that their dogs are AKC, which is American Kennel Club Registered Breeders. Sadly, breed registries are simply a membership. So all you have to do is fill out paperwork, pay the money, you’re a member. I verified that just again last night to make sure I was not stating old facts. In addition, breed registries provide absolutely no guarantee of the facility’s quality, the breeder’s skill or knowledge, and the progeny of the parents of the puppies. Because I wanted to be fair, and it had been a while since I had been in a store that sold puppies, I recently visited another puppy store, and I breed... I talk to breeders all the time. We actually recommend reputable breeders when people are looking for puppies. So when I went there, again, they were quick to point out the USDA license and the AKC registry. When I went online, the cost for registering a litter of puppies is $25 plus $2 per puppy. In fact, I have to prove more about my skill and knowledge as a positive professional dog trainer to be a member or to be licensed through the organizations that I belong to than the AKC has to do to be a registered breeder. And I have to do that, and my continuing education requirements are verified each Petland Puppies and some other places state that their puppies come at the ages of eight to 10 weeks, but I was never able to... They were not showing me proof of that. They wouldn’t discuss proof of that. When asked where the breeders were located, they stated they were not local breeders, and they listed Missouri Midwest and some in the north, which are the very leading places for puppy mills. When asked about how the puppies are sold, I was honestly encouraged when I was told the staff asked questions about the family and the breed and the dog desired. And if the staff feels particularly that one particular dog may not be the right fit for that family, then they try to redirect them. I was much less encouraged when, at the end, I asked, “What happens if they still want that puppy?” And they say the customer is always right. They sell the puppy, whether it’s right or not. Please note that a reputable breeder will not sell a puppy to anyone if the breeder decides it is not a good fit for both the family and the dog. A reputable breeder will interview the potential buyer in great detail. They will be there to support the buyer for the life of the puppy. A reputable breeder will conduct temperament tests and will know the personality of each puppy in the litter to ensure the best match for the puppy and the buyer. He or she will also take the puppy back at any time, any age, for any reason or no reason at all, if the owner decides they need the puppy, the dog, to be given back. I know one such reputable breeder here in Cherokee County, and she has told people, “If you don’t want that dog, I will leave my porch unlocked. Put the dog there. You don’t have to see me. You don’t... I will ask you no questions. I will take that dog and care for that dog.” So basically, I was asked what happened, and I did ask what happens if the puppies aren’t sold by a certain age, because puppies quit being cute when they become between five months, four and a half, five months to approximately two years. They’re what we call teens. They’re like teen kids. They want the keys, the cars, and money, and that’s it. So they’re bitey. They’re... That’s the time when most of them get sent to shelters or given up by families. What I was told is that they continue to reduce the price of the dog until that dog eventually sells. So basically, they put that dog on clearance sale like a pair of slacks. I was pleased when I was talking to a manager, that the manager was observant to quickly leave our conversation and separate some puppies that he saw in one of their enclosures when one puppy was picking on another. I was very pleased with that. I was not pleased when I saw four other people closer than that manager who were doing nothing, because they did not recognize appropriate puppy play. Amongst some of the behaviors that I observed while I was watching these dogs, I saw a lot of stress signals from inappropriate play. When I asked about this, I was told that if it gets really bad, and that was defined as by a fight, someone will separate the puppies. The staff’s not trained in canine body language, which is a puppy’s and a dog’s first language. They’re not trained in appropriate play. The general public doesn’t understand appropriate play, but they have the resources to learn, and I think anybody in charge of puppies should know those things. Sadly, puppies involved in inappropriate play learn very bad behaviors. This leads to long-term puppy issues and long-term behavioral issues when it goes... If this happens during what’s called a critical developmental stage and a fear period, when suddenly puppies become fearful. There was a study done, as we’ve done more studies on canine cognition. Some results of that study show that a human... A dog has the same cognitive ability as a human child that’s approximately two years old. So this being the case, would it not be wise to produce and raise these sentient beings in a way that treats them well, respects them, rather than as livestock to be simply sold? Observations through my facility and through my years of being a trainer, the fact that we are the only facility that specializes in puppies through our nursery, we have the only nursery in Georgia, and as far as I can tell, the only puppy nursery in the country. We actually work with puppies ages eight to 16 weeks. It is a specialty of ours. It encompasses a great deal of the critical developmental stages, which is when the puppy’s brain’s growing the most and when they’re able to learn a great deal. My highly-trained staff and I have been able to observe puppies and dogs who have come from breeders, both reputable and not so reputable, as well as puppies who have been purchased from pet stores. Since this meeting is about sale of puppies from pet stores, those are the observations I’m going to focus on at the moment. Puppies purchased from pet stores, and I had two in my facility that were Bernese Mountain Dogs today, and two Bernese Mountain Dogs that came from reputable breeders. But various behaviors that we observe from the pet store puppies, they do what’s known as attention-seeking. They’ll do excessive jumping, pawing, licking, biting, mouthing, and resource guarding, meaning they will keep stuff, resources from other dogs. This is seen more in these puppies than in other dogs. Physically, the puppies and the dogs are not as healthy as the same breed that has come from reputable breeders. You can see this by pictures that we take. Examples of that, their legs are not as sturdy, their paws often turn out. Some of the dogs, and these are dogs in my facility that have come from pet stores as well, some seizures... Some have seizures. Their heads are not developed correctly, which leads to other health and mental issues. Some dogs have breathing issues. These are just a very few examples of poor breeding that is seen in puppies and dogs specifically being purchased from pet stores. Please note, every one of these puppies that I’m talking about is an AKC-registered puppy, and they have the papers from the pet store. So, in conclusion, with the information and observations that I’ve made, I cannot in good conscience recommend or support the sale of puppies in pet stores. I do understand this is how a majority of the money is made in these stores. However, there are pet-related stores that make money and do well that are not involved in puppy sales. If you like puppies and dogs, support those stores. Open one of your own, but do not endanger such wonderful cognizant beings by selling them for profit.
Thank you. Karen Paul.
Hello. My name is Karen Paul, and I live in Cherokee County off of Bell’s Ferry. I am an advocate that exposes pet stores. I am here today in support of this ordinance because I have seen firsthand, over and over again, issues that arise from pet stores that operate with a business model to sell kittens and puppies to the public. But it is at a risk, because last time I spoke at a meeting such as this that passed a similar ordinance, a pet store that is represented here today actually pursued a lawsuit against me in order to silence what I have exposed. With having several businesses here in Georgia that operate in such a manner, I was able to and continue to investigate how these businesses operate. In three years, I have witnessed the reality, which is consumer fraud, predatory lending, the sale of sick pets, the death of pets shortly after purchase, aggressive sales tactics, and heartbroken families. There are so many issues that I could speak to you for hours. These businesses and this industry have bullied, threatened, silenced any who oppose them, and the consumers who tried to tell others their experiences. Because for these businesses is about one thing, and that is money. They rely on the public to be uneducated in these matters and will do whatever it takes to continue to mislead and deceive the public. I encourage you to pass this ordinance so that you can protect your residents from the actions and activities of these businesses, so that I won’t have to expose a future business, so I won’t have to speak with another consumer who is crying over what they are dealing with or the death of a beloved pet, because you can stop it before it ever begins in your community. For many, the concern is the source of where these pets come from, but it goes beyond that, because it directly affects our community. This is not some small, locally-owned businesses, but this is a large, profiting industry. I don’t want families to continue to experience what other families have. Your residents deserve better. I ask you to stand against this with us. Vote yes for this ban. Please stop the retail sale of cats and dogs.
Thank you. Monty... I’m not sure how to say that. Okay, I’ll let you say that. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Monty Broke. I live on Raspberry Road in Rome, Georgia, and I’m the owner of Petland of Rome and Petland of Dalton. I don’t have to be here tonight. I don’t really have a dog in this hunt, other than I don’t want this kind of ban to come to my place. In the meantime, I could sit in Rome and Dalton and watch your people come to me, because they’re still going to want dogs. I’m not opposed to rescues. I help our rescues in the communities I’m in. The Animal Rescue Foundation of Rome and Floyd County, I donate money to. I donate food to them, which they distribute to shelters. I work with Floyd Felines. Floyd County Feline... Or, M. Floyd County Floyd Felines basically fills up my cattery, and I give them 100% of the proceeds for the sale of those kittens. I also donate to other local charities. I’m a member of the community. I’m not a monster like we’re getting portrayed here. I buy from reputable USDA-registered breeders, ones that have regular investigations or regular visits from the USDA. If their inspection reports have one critical item, one bad item on their report in the last two years, I don’t buy from them. In two weeks, I’m going to go to Oklahoma, Missouri, and Kansas to visit breeders. I buy from that area. The majority of breeders... majority of breeders in the US live in that area. That's where people breed puppies. I, I was just in Iowa recently, visiting a number of Amish breeders. We, our pets, our puppies, have been seen by at least three vets before they've ever gone to the consumer. I provide a 14-day viral and one-year congenital warranty. If I bought from an actual puppy mill, I'd go broke in a hurry. Yes, we are a business. We have to make some money to be able to keep our doors open, and to keep our people employed. But we do it right. I, I hate how every puppy retail establishment gets painted with that same brush. It's wrong. If you wanna stop puppy mills, you don't get rid of the pet retail. Most of, a lot of puppy mills are, use the internet, and they use flea markets. Your, your ordinance, your proposed ordinance, doesn't touch either one of those. I can't afford to buy puppy mill puppies, and I wanna do business right, and so I, I provide warranties that help ensure my customers, we're gonna do the right thing by them. If you want to get rid of puppy mills, make, getting rid of pet retail isn't the answer, because you shove them to the internet. You shove the consumer, that is, to the internet. You shove them to the flea markets. There, I can guarantee, they're not getting seen by three vets, all right? They're not coming with, with warranties. So you're taking that away from, from the citizens of Canton. I don't have to be here tonight. Petland of Rome, Petland of Dalton, can you guys stand up or wave? I brought a lot of my people with me, too, because they believe in what we do, and they know that we do right by, by our customers. That's really all I have to offer, folks. I drove here and brought a mess of my people here to tell you, this isn't gonna get rid of puppy mills. This is gonna expand puppy mills. All right, thank you.
Okay, we will, I'm going by first name here, Vladimir. Is that right? Is that you?
I, I saw a green.
Oh, okay, you're okay? All right, thank you, sir. Violet Carr. Now, for the sake of transparency, I wanna tell you, this is my granddaughter. In case anybody has any objection to that, it's just too bad. She's gonna speak, okay? If she can reach the microphone.
My name is, I live on Cairo Concord Road in Havana. My name is Violet Carr. I am eight years old. Thank you for considering this law to help puppies and kittens.
Okay, Brad Parker.
I appreciate your time, council. You mentioned earlier that y'all were gonna be breaking. Will y'all be voting on this tonight?
I anticipate if, if there are motion, if a motion is made, yeah, we can be voting tonight, and I expect that we will.
Just wanted to make sure, so we'd all stay.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you taking the time to listen. My name's Brad Parker. My family owns the Petland in Kennesaw, Georgia, and we've owned it for 16 years. I'm here to respectfully request that you give the constituents of this city, who are also our valued customers, we've sold over 300 puppies in the last three years to Canton, an opportunity to have more of a public hearing or debate on this proposed ordinance. The mayor, you've quoted as stating that this ordinance is an effort to get ahead of the game. I believe that that is a slippery slope. Animal activists who support these efforts tout that some 220 local governments have passed this retail ban of the sale of dogs and cats. The reality, though, is there's 24,000 counties and cities in the United States, so by these numbers, less than 1% of local governments have passed these. Furthermore, the activists usually don't lead on to the fact that 80% of these counties and cities are like the city of Canton, and don't actually have pet stores. So of the remaining counties of these, many of these are reversing course. State preemption is going into place to reverse the ordinances. Stores are being grandfathered in, because counties and cities have realized they've made a mistake, and there's been numerous lawsuits, and I'm a part of one of those down in Sarasota, Florida, as well. Tonight, we're here to deal with a problem that does not exist in the city of Canton. These efforts strip away the freedom of choice by consumers, and have anti-business implications, and should cause serious concern for, I believe, all businesses in Canton. The ordinance, the ordinance falls short in curbing the problem that exists with backyard and unlicensed breeders. It affects hobby breeders. It penalizes small, family-owned businesses, and that follow existing federal and state laws that sell legal products. I ask that you table this ordinance for a public debate at a later date, and just from a few comments that I've heard, the HSUS made a comment, you know, this isn't about business, this isn't about putting businesses out of business, but it would be okay for my store to convert to their model. I could sell HSUS dogs if I would like to. Another person made a comment that, I can sell anything that I want to, just not puppies and kittens. You know, it's not their decision what me and my family decide to do. This is our business model, and this is what we choose to do. This is America, and I have the right to sell legal product. So I will always be standing very firm in standing up for my rights. Anybody that's here to support my statements, I'd appreciate it if you'd stand up.
I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thanks so much for having me tonight, and council people. I'm Peter Maraldo. I reside in Woodstock, Georgia. I want you to know that I'm a consultant in the retail marketplace, operate here out of Cherokee County. I'm a national consultant, and I work with retailers on both sides of this issue. And I will tell you that there are terrific retailers who sell puppies, and there are some retailers who need to certainly get better at it. But at the same time, places like PetSmart and Petco, who sell reptiles, are in that same position. Some stores do really well, and other stores need some help. So I'm really here just to share some information with you about the retail environment and what's taking place out there. We heard some testimony tonight, excuse me, from folks who keep referring to reputable breeders. And where is the standard, or where is the organization that determines someone's a reputable breeder? There is not one. What you heard tonight are people's opinions, and that, I think that, that you have to take that to heart. Everybody certainly wants to bring home a wonderful, healthy pet, but it doesn't happen that way all the time. It doesn't happen that way in life. Some children are born and never leave the hospital, correct? So reputable is an interesting term that was used this evening. The reality is that stores who are governed by the United States Department of Agriculture have to meet a standard, and they are looked upon, looked over, and inspected. Passing this ban, I think, would, A, not bode well for business in Canton. I work with a lot of franchise organizations in the United States, work on a national level. In the last two years, with various bans that have coming up in different townships in this country, there's a lot of conversation in, in that marketplace about, should I go to a community who are banning, arbitrarily banning, different ways of doing business? Are they business-friendly? And when I start to, I've been doing this for over 25 years. It's concerning to me when I hear this in the franchise world, and there's a lot of conversation about, be careful about what town you go to and you choose to do business in. I don't, I love Canton, I love Cherokee County and North Georgia, and we're a free society here, and everyone, I think, does a great job, certainly, in the retail marketplace. So I would ask that, if anything, that you don't vote tonight, I would love to see you spend a little more time gathering true facts about this issue, and then make a decision. You're entitled, and you have the right to make a decision who does business in your town, sir, by all means. So it is concerning. I am also concerned with these bans, that it forces people to the internet, to the people that, that breed puppies, in reference to what everyone was talking about here tonight. What is a reputable, again, what is a reputable breeder? There's no sanctioned group in this country that makes that determination. It's hearsay. And I will tell you that I speak to very prominent vets across the country, veterinary doctors, and there's not a physician in that marketplace that could tell you that that puppy right there came from a puppy mill. It's fact. They cannot do that. They can visibly look at a dog and say it's been abused, and most likely came from that environment, but from a health standpoint, can't be done. It's impossible. And I've been asking this question for over 10 years now. Let me share a little story with you. I happen to be in, in the show dog circle, and have a lot of friends who show dogs. And a good friend of mine won Westminster Dog Show in New York City in 2003 with a Bichon Frise, and I happened, my family happened to get, and his name was JR, by the way, we wound up with JR's grandson. Now, these people who show dogs breed to perfection. This is what their whole drive is, to have the perfect breed. Unfortunately, my dog, JR's grandson, we had to put down at 10 years old. He wound up at nine and 10 years old having reoccurring cancer. Now, he did not come from a puppy mill. Came from the best breeding people in the country, just like in, in society. Some people wind up with cancer, get sick, die young. It, it just happens. But to blame it on a breeder, or to, to say that all dogs who are ill come from a puppy mill, is, is just not fact. It's simply not fact. The other concern that I have, and I, again, I, I'm in pet stores all across the country, and big retailers. I happened to be in Buckhead last year, at a PetSmart, and I was leaving, there was a nice rescue group outside that was selling dogs, and the gal had some pure breed, two different breeds, small dogs, and I asked her, how, how much are you asking for those dogs? And they were Shih Tzu's and another breed. And she said, I'm asking $1,800. $1,800, you're a rescue. She said, no, let me explain something to you. I go to the puppy mills and buy these dogs to rescue them, and then I come here and try to find them a good home. That doesn't add up to me. There's an entire underground trade in the rescue industry that are also selling and retailing dogs for profit. It happens every single day. There are very good breeders out there, there are very good rescue organizations, but there are also people in your town at your PetSmart, who may not be reputable, who are selling dogs, as a rescue dog. So it's across the board. Again, we need good rescue groups, and we need to have very good breeders at the same time. But a hasty decision isn't really going to help anybody. And if I live in Canton, and I can't buy a dog locally, then I'm gonna go to another state or another city, or I'm gonna wind up on the internet. And I'm assuming, because the photos they're showing me on the internet of the big mansion in the background, that my puppy's coming from a great environment. But I don't know that for a fact, and there's no governing body that says that's a reputable breeder. So those are where my concerns lie. I, I think that pet ownership is very important. If you pass this ban, your shelter's not changing. I'm in shelters across the country as well. Seven million dogs die in this country and are replaced every single year. Your shelter is filled with dogs because of irresponsible ownership, not because they came from Mississippi, or Southern Georgia, or Tennessee. Not gonna affect your, your, your shelter whatsoever. So I just ask, if you'd be so kind, is to not vote on this tonight, to go ahead and, and get the facts from, from both sides. Everyone's passionate about this, and that's the good thing. That passion creates a better place for all animals. But to pass a ban without the facts, without knowing, I think hurts your, your business environment here in Canton. And I don't think any, any city wants to have a reputation of not being a friendly place to come and, and get into business. So I ask that you please do that, and so for that reason, even though I support, to, to an extent, both sides, I'm not going to support this ban at this time until you have further intelligence on it. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, my name's Hunt McDonald. I'm the owner of Petland Dunwoodie. I've owned that store now for 17 years. And I'll be very brief tonight, I promise, because I know how y'all feel about it, too. I'm very aware that y'all have received phone calls and emails from, throughout your community on this issue. I know that there are members on this council who have posted on social media what their opinions are and what they plan to do. I'm here to ask you to give the time to learn more information yourself, and also to talk to your constituents. I ask that you table this bill tonight. Talk to those of us who have owned stores for significant periods of time. We're happy to show you what we do. We're happy to talk about it. We are transparent in what we do. I hope that you'll gain this knowledge, and you might see a different light. That is all. Thank you very much.
We have one more lady on the front row here, had asked, I think you'd asked that you didn't sign up.
Right. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, we'll, we'll stay. Let's see, so y'all just didn't sign up, right?
No.
Okay. All right, let's see who we got. We got that wants to speak. How many more? All right, one, two, three, four, after you, and that'll be all.
Well, I'll try to be brief, try to. My name's Jo Lynn Van Camp. I live on East Cherokee. I've lived in Georgia my whole life. I have run a rescue group since the 90s with Alex Cooley. I have gone undercover with animal cruelty cases. I have investigated animal cruelty. I've worked with the Department of Agriculture. Done a lot of stuff. I have been in on busting some of the puppy mills, lots of stuff, that most of these people have done a lot of these things also. But I, I think, you know, I've listened to a lot of what I consider people trying to distract us from the point, a lot of BS, I'm sorry to say. And I don't think everyone is here for the same outcome. I think there's two different types of people here. There are the people here that have worked on behalf of animals, have rescued animals, have taken animals from horrible conditions, have spent their, their life, their money, their, their hearts, getting them better, and for the love of animals. They're here because they want things to get better for animals. They see animals in horrible conditions, and they're here because they hate seeing people with animals that die right after they get them from pet stores, and that's why they are here. I see other people that are here because of one thing, and that is money. I see other people that are here because of one thing, and that is money. Those are the two things that I see. And if we are a city of Canton concerned about looking good and wanting to have business and wanting to have people that want to start businesses and have our taxpayers proud of our city and save money, then let's talk about where our money is going. It's going to build these shelters where all these dogs are being killed, all these healthy dogs are being killed. And all these dead bodies are filling up our landfills that our taxpayers are paying for. And it's useless because we're allowing these puppy mills to breed and breed and breed and sell to pet stores. Meanwhile, we're killing and killing and killing, and it doesn't make any sense. Why are we allowing this? Is that good business? Who's making money and who's losing money? The taxpayers are losing money, the business owners are making money, that are selling pets from these horrific places called puppy mills. I have rescued 3,000, over 3,000 dogs from death row at shelters and many from puppy mills. One particular case, because you hear about these big fantastic numbers and it doesn't mean anything until maybe you get down to particular cases. One particular lemon drop female dog came from a puppy mill. And after many months of getting her back to where she could walk, we took her to get her spayed and the veterinarian opened her up and could not find her uterus. And we came to find out, her uterus had fallen through her abdomen from having been bred so many times. And when her uterus fell through her abdomen, it pulled all of her other organs through with it. So she had to get out her book and look where all the organs went and put this dog back together. This is common. This happens in puppy mills. I have talked to and worked with some lawyers up north who have been successful in shutting down pet lands up north. Some of the ordinances or contracts that they have signed up north with puppy mills. One, in fact, is that they will accept shipments that have up to 25% of the puppies dead when they arrive on the dock, because they do not know how they will be shipped in the winter or the summer. But up to 25% can be dead, not more. But these lawyers have been successful in shutting down a lot of the pet lands up north. Anyways, I could go on, but this is about money and life and death. And we have got to stop this waste. It's a waste of life so that money can be made. So do the right thing, please, in every instance. Do the right thing for the citizens, for business, and for the animals. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you all a big laugh. This is my first city council meeting. My name is Charlotte Griffin. I live in Canton and been a resident for eight years. I'm from up north. I came to this meeting to complain about parking. And God sent me here because I'm a breeder.
Well, you complain about parking too. It's public input period. You're welcome to do that too.
But anyway, it was just weird that I came on such a night that you're going to have a vote. And as I said, God must have sent me. I am a reputable breeder. I heard a gentleman say, what defines a reputable breeder? I've been doing it for over 40 years. I have no complaints. I'm a breeder of merit with the AKC. I'm a club member with the National Club of my breed. I do genetic testing. I don't breed a lot of dogs. I'm a hobbyist. I breed for the welfare of my breed to limit genetic possibilities. I sell healthy puppies. As somebody else said, I guarantee everything that, I think the lawyer, had spoken about that a good breeder does do. I take a puppy back under any circumstances. I interview people. I don't sell to just certain people. I really screen who gets my dogs. I care about them. And I think I do a good job. Nothing leaves under 12 weeks of age. I am appalled by puppy mills. They are disgusting, bad places. PetSmart in Canton, yes, they have rescue animals that they bring in. For $1,800, the guy's crazy. They're 400, 200, that's for the cost of Spain. I never saw an animal there with that kind of a price tag. I wouldn't get that from one of my pedigree puppies necessarily. So anyway, I just wanted to make it clear, I think that what you're voting on, you should do. I support it.
Thank you. You're number three out of four now. Next to last.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I originally had no intention of speaking, but I heard somebody mention from the Petland stores that you needed to check facts. I'm asking you to simply go to Google, Google Petland.
Go ahead and state your name if you don't mind and where you live.
D. Graff, and I just live down the road in Autumn Brook in Canton.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking you to simply Google Petland. The amount of pages that will come up of horror stories from consumers who have bought pets from them that have died, that have come out of there with horrible diseases is disgusting. I'm shaking right now because I am so angry. This entire thing, this, we keep going around and around like they were saying. We've got the pets in the shelters that we're killing, but yet we're selling them in stores. There's an issue here. Please, I beg of you, please, let's ban retail sales of dogs and cats.
Thank you. What's that? You're next.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Frangie, and I live off Red Gate Overlook, and I am a Canton resident. And I ask for you to please support this ban of puppies and kittens being sold. We have a huge problem. If you notice, PetSmart, they have stopped adopting out or stopped selling breeder dogs. They used to a long time ago, but they have now transitioned and moved above and gotten with the times and been progressive to actually open their doors to rescues to adopt those animals out because we have a serious overpopulation problem. And there are breed-specific rescues that actually do rescue full-breed dogs that are available at a lower price. And what's surprising is that after Christmas, usually within two weeks to two months, you will see those dogs end up in shelters, on Craigslist, on the internet, on Facebook. And those are the dogs that are bought from Petland, and they can't afford it. They are up to their eyeballs in vet bills. They are at 4,000, 8,000, 10,000. I can't afford it anymore. And they will only warranty the dog if you take them to their vet that has his own questionable practices that have occurred. And I'm sure you've all heard about the Petland Kennesaw veterinarian. He was in the city of Canton. So I beg of you as a resident, please, listen to me. I have a problem with people coming from Rome, from people coming from Dunwoody. We have to be the trendsetters in Canton. I moved, I moved from Cobb County to Cherokee, and I was proud to say, there's no Petland here. But if you guys allow a Petland to come here, I'm not going to be proud to live in this city anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. One more. One more. I'm sorry, I counted wrong. One more.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name is Karen Kaplan. I'm a new Georgian. I've been in Cherokee County for a year and a half. I live in Canton and appeared in court. I'm also a member of PETA and ASPCA. And I was going to suggest, I would like to urge this honored body that a picture's worth a thousand words, but being present is even better. And I would ask you that perhaps you take a field trip to a puppy mill. If not, there are plenty online sites. And if you Google puppy mill, you can see some real horrifying things. And somebody's keeping puppy mills in business, and it's not individual Americans. It's these pet stores that are being supplied by the puppy mills that are keeping puppy mills going. And if we are to be any kind of progressive people with a thought and care for these sentient beings, there's no way, when you see this, that you could allow this suffering. And keeping these stores, doing business with this model, is perpetuating suffering. So I urge you all to go and Google puppy mills and see what they're all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all our public input period, and that's probably one of the longest 10 minutes we've ever had, you know, so. But still, we do appreciate everyone's input here, and we will be discussing this a little later in our agenda. We have, our next item is the consent agenda. There are one, two, three, four, or maybe four items on the consent agenda. I will read those items, and if any member of the council would like any of those pulled off for further discussion, we'll do so. Item A, approval of year-end budget amendment. These are items that we discussed in detail at our normal work session two weeks ago. Item B, approval of surplus auction items. Item C, approval of amendment, city ordinance, section 18274, to change wording from firearms to weapons in accordance with Official Code of Georgia 1611173. D is approval of amendment to city ordinance 4280 through 4283 in accordance with Official Code of Georgia 17550 through 17554 regarding disposition of unclaimed confiscated personal property. Are there any of those you would like taken off for further discussion?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item nine, Old Business 9A, discussion and possible action ordinance prohibiting the retail sale of dogs and cats by retail pet stores. Any discussion? Ms. McGrew?
Yes, thank you. It is my opinion that this council has done a great deal of research on the subject. We have done our Google searches. We've read literature. We have received emails from the public near and far, as far away as Maryland. We've given information on social media. We've supplied information that is asked of us. Also, on my particular page, I'm very open with what I support and what I do not support, and it's Sandy McGrew for Canton, Georgia. I welcome you to like it and learn more about me. So, that said, I think we know what we're doing because we've had the usual two, two and a half weeks to go over the information we've been given. This ordinance is a good beginning to eliminating mills. It's not going to be a solvent. It's not going to happen overnight, but it is my thinking that you start with baby steps. It's a good beginning. We have more work to do. This is not going to end puppy mills, which would be, I could die a happy woman if they were ended. Canton needs to actually look into the business licenses that we have and to see if we have any puppy mills that have licenses in Canton, Georgia. I would like for the county to do the same thing. Let's take a look at this puppy mill business. Let's go deeper. Let's start with eliminating the retail sales of puppies and kittens in our pet stores and go deeper. The ban may actually have an impact on the puppy mills, and, I'm a cat person, the kitten mills. The ban may have an impact on the mills, as we all have had the economics classes at college and high school, supply and demand. If there is less demand, there will be a smaller supply. If we diminish the demand, we will diminish the supply. I'm comfortable with this. I'm very comfortable with what we're doing. The pet population has exploded. It's up to us, who have cognitive reason, to take care of things who cannot take care of themselves. We have a right to take care of our children, who cannot think for themselves, our geriatric population, who often need help thinking for themselves and taking care. And we have to take care of the animals. We're at the top of the food chain, and we're abusing them. It's up to us to do better. I had a call today from a woman, whose husband was here earlier, but he had to leave. She called me because her daughter, who works at an apartment complex in Canton, found a cat. What was it, 28 degrees this morning? And I apologize if this is offensive, but I really hope it does offend you. I hope this ruins your day. This woman called to tell me that her daughter, who works at this apartment complex, found a cat in the throes of birth. Two kittens were partially born, partially, part in, part out. The kittens were frozen to death. The mother cat was in the process of, there's nothing else, she was going to die. Overpopulation. We have to do better. It is my goal to do better. It is my passion to take care of those who cannot take care of themselves, be they elderly humans, human children, or cats and dogs, fish and birds. I'm very comfortable with what we're doing. On behalf of all citizens of Canton, current and future, on behalf of the two-legged citizens of Canton, on behalf of the four-legged citizens of Canton, I move to go forward with a proposed ordinance to prohibit the retail sale of cats and dogs in a pet store environment.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just kind of start by saying that, you know, it is an emotional issue. We're all very passionate about our pets. I have a rescue cat myself, a Maine Coon, wonderful breed, if you know them, very gentle giants, they call them. And so I'm a small business owner myself, so I'm very pro-business. So I take all that out of the equation. My job is not to judge anyone. It's a good business, a bad business, a good person, a bad person. But my job is to represent the constituents of Canton. And we did discuss this at our last work session. It was on the agenda. It's been advertised, it's been on our website. So our constituents have had time to contact us, and they have contacted us. And I have contacted them. And my constituents overwhelmingly support this ban. And my job is to represent them regardless of what I think or may not think on the issue. And every day, we hold our businesses in Canton to a higher standard, I think, and I'm very proud of that. We control regulations all the time. We regulate their signage, you know, the size of signage that they can have. We regulate, they can't have, you know, flashing LEDs, D lighting in their windows. You know, we regulate, we can't have package stores in the city of Canton. You know, we regulate, we can't have package stores in the city of Canton, so our citizens have to drive down to at least Holly Springs to buy a bottle of liquor. So our citizens every day have to, you know, drive elsewhere to buy certain products. And so, this is not unlike that. So, and I think, you know, I'm all about quality over quantity, and I think, you know, better business begets better business. And I think, you know, I think that, you know, having better businesses in town will attract business, not distract business from coming to Canton. So, again, my job is to represent our constituents. Our constituents have spoken to me loudly and clearly. They support this ban, and therefore, I do as well.
Ms. Yawn.
I, my wife and I have been very involved with our shelter, local shelter, shelters in other counties surrounding us. She's probably very well-known to many of the rescue organizations, if any of the representatives here tonight. So we're very aware of the situation with the overpopulation, with the animals that are killed because there's not enough people going to take them home. I lost my train of thought. But I'm, so I am very well-aware of all the issues involved with this. We are very active and do our research, and we constantly see what's going on in the community of pet lovers and pet rescues and pet breeders. Our own particular, my little girls, we got from a private breeder. I got to go sit on their kitchen floor and have the whole litter crawl all over me before we took them home. And I just, even looking at most of your pet stores that I've ever been into, like when they used to be in the malls, they're sitting in sterile cages, waiting. They may take them out and let them play a little bit, but for the most part, they're stuck in their little cages. And I just feel like this is the right direction for us as a city, and it's the direction that our citizens have overwhelmingly told us they want us to do. So I just, I feel very strongly that this is the proper thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Goodwin.
Yes. This is a subject that's very dear to my heart. I raised German Shepherds as I grew up for many years, and been around a lot of animals. My daughter was a cat lover, which I never loved, but I came across one on the side of 575 one day, and little baby kitten, and just didn't have the heart to leave it there. Picked it up, brought it home, and I've had kittens ever since, I guess. But wonderful memories, my children playing with pets, my grandchildren now. You know, I also have some compassion, the gentleman that spoke earlier had some pet stores, because I understand that he goes beyond and above the normal call of what other people may do. But I think it's the right thing for us to do here, is to do what the public has called us to do, make that decision, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Wilson.
For those of you who asked us to table this and vote on it later, perhaps you don't know what we have been listening to for the last two weeks. We have had very, very much input. So I have tried to educate myself by going on the internet, by interviewing people. I grew up on a farm. I probably know animals as well as anybody here. My dog is a rescue, and I love him very much, and I am really, cannot think about an abused animal. So my constituents have told me to vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Grant.
One other thing I forgot to mention is this, we currently do not have any pet stores in the city of Canton that are selling dogs or cats or puppies or kittens. And so, therefore, I don't think this ordinance is taking away rights of anyone or hurting any of our current business owners. And so I think, you know, if we're going to do this now, is a great time to do it. We're not penalizing any of our current businesses, and I think that's a good time to do it. And so, if Canton is the first, has to be the first city in Georgia to do this, then so be it. I'm proud of our city. I'm proud of our businesses. I'm proud of this council and the tough decisions, so.[921.12][921.12](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Okay. I would like to make a couple of comments, just for the sake of transparency and before voting. And I've been asked, how did this issue come up to begin with? Why does the city of Canton bring this up? And yes, my daughter works with the ASPCA. She deals with legislative animal issues in Florida and Georgia. She brought to my attention House Bill 144, which would have prohibited our city from banning the retail sales of puppies and kittens. The legislature continuously has preempted the right of your local government to decide which may be, what may be the best, in the best interest for your community. They've done it with fireworks. I mean, we can't tell, we have very little control over fireworks, and a lot of people, we get complaints, animals are scared when those things start going off, and the local government can't do anything really about it, because they have preempted our authority to do so. They also have preempted our authority relative to guns and weapons. I mean, they've taken that away. And it's any number of issues, they've taken away the local authority. Well, that really got to my attention, taking away the local authority, because local government, like the city government, is the closest to the people. We listen to the people. Most of you that are here know where I live. I mean, you know, I hear complaints. I also hear good things from people not complaining, but you know me. And as I learned more about House Bill 144, it was clear of its intention and motives. I also learned even more than I already knew about puppy mills in the last few weeks. I already knew that thousands of animals are euthanized each year, and that animal shelters and rescue organizations work extremely hard trying to find homes for these homeless animals. So after meeting with members of our legislative delegation and getting no commitment on House Bill 144, and speaking with members of the council, I knew it was time to act. The timing was such that the city of Canton, as Mr. Grant has indicated there, currently has no pet stores that sell puppies or kittens. So this city would not be harming any retail pet store in our city. I received more positive emails on this one issue than on any other issue in my nine-plus years as your mayor. And I know the council members probably did as well. I know they did. We have also received attention from places like as far away as Montana, Missouri, Maryland, and Florida. This ordinance is a perfect example of where we, as city officials, with the support of our citizens, can truly make a difference. It further says that the city of Canton is a pet-friendly city, and that we believe that pets are family members, to be cared for and concerned about. They enrich our lives in many ways, and I know that too, because we have two rescue kittens at our house. So for this city to discourage puppy mills in any way and to encourage the adoption of shelter and rescue animals, that's the right thing for us to do. Puppies and kittens are not commodities to be sold at retail stores and placed on the shelf like a can of corn. I am so proud of this community, which unselfishly cares about the well-being of puppies and kittens, when there are those who seem to care more about the net profit and financial gain. I believe this council will be taking a major step tonight to become the first city in the state of Georgia to pass an ordinance banning the retail sales of puppies and kittens. If so, I'm sure we will be challenged on some level. But we know it's the right thing to do, and we will meet those challenges on behalf of those animals who cannot represent themselves.
So we have now, anyone else?[1180.16][1180.16](APPLAUSE). Is there anyone else? We have, we have a motion and a second on the table. So we need to vote. Those in favor signify. We'll do it if you request a roll call. Okay. Ms. McGrew.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Ms. Yawn.
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
All members voting for the motion. Ordinance is passed.[1212.66][1212.66](APPLAUSE). Just so there's no delay in this, we are, this ordinance will be signed tonight and will become effective immediately.[1250.58][1250.58](APPLAUSE). Okay. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and Possible Action on Ordinance to Amend Numerous Sections Unified Development Code. Mr. Patton is here. I would, I would like to say that we could move this to our next work session if the council would approve, rather than moving forward with this one. At this time, there are some issues, I think, that may need a little refreshing, at least in my memory. Is anyone tell they want to do that, or you want to go ahead and deal with it? It's really up to you. Mr. Grant.
I was just going to ask, and I'm fine with that, especially it's been a long night, but was there any particular reason? I recall that there may have been something that we needed or a time factor involved that there was a reason we needed to pass something tonight?
Soil erosion.
We made, we made some tweaks in there for EPD as it related to our MS4 permit.
No, the soil erosion is going to come next month.
Then we'll just do them both together.
So there's no reason?
Okay. In regards to this, it was...
Is that okay with everyone here?
Oh, I'm sorry. The issue...
Make a motion to postpone.
So moved. The timing issue was on the...
Private road.
Yes.
Amendment.
The private road.
The water main.
The water main.
Yes.
Across private property.
Is that in that?
It is in there. The water line across private property is in the UDC.
So do you want to act on it? Can we vote on that? Or... That's included, right?
You could pull that one item out and vote on it, if you wanted to.
You want to do that, pull that one item out?
Yes.
Then I will amend the motion to pull that item out. And table the rest of it till our next meeting.
Okay. Ken's going to pull that out. You want to state the section and all that that will be coming out?
Get to it, Mr. Mayor. Okay, the section that is involved with the water mains, private roads, is...
Page 19.
What's, chapter 110-02-02L. And it reads that this section be amended by deleting the existing L in its entirety and adding the following language, "Water mains on private roads. City may accept ownership of water mains installed along roadways that are not dedicated for public use, i.e., are without public right-of-way property owners dedicate it permanent easement to the city."
Change the word to "may." Do you want to...
Change the word to "may," which, that doesn't obligate the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I would move to accept that, that change.
I think the word "not" was left out of the new, it should say "not dedicated for public use." That's what it currently says, and, because we're talking about private roads, so. The "will to may" is the change you're making. It's just a typo, leaving the word "not" out in the proposed language. So it should read, "Roads not dedicated for public use."
In the ordinance, it has "not dedicated for public use."
Right. So really, all you need is a motion to change the word "will to may."
Correct.
In that section.
I move to change the word "mill will to may" in that section.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay.
And then we got to postpone the rest of it. We need a motion to postpone the rest of it.
No motion. We need one to postpone the rest of that section.
We got a motion. We just didn't vote on it.
Okay. We have a motion. Mr. Grant made the motion. Ferris made the motion, and Ms. Wilson seconded that motion to postpone until the next work session. Okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Next item. Discussion and possible action to amend Canton's Code of Ordinance Development Code as pertains to apartments. Mr. Patton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. A public hearing was held on this prior to the city council meeting. We proposed that our ordinances be changed so that all zoning districts that allow multiple family residential be changed to conditional use approval. This also includes existing condition zoning approval, approved multiple family properties, and master plan approval, conditions of approval in which multiple family was approved. So those would also be conditional use.
Any discussion here? Yes, ma'am.
So someone who, so apartments have already been approved in certain master plans, and we're providing conditional use. Does that mean that anyone wanting to propose apartments would have to first come before the planning commission and follow that process, or would they only come to city council and ask for a conditional use?
Conditional use approval process specifies a public hearing through the planning commission with a recommendation from the planning commission on to city council for a final decision.
So it's the whole thing again?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
I move to amend the ordinance to make apartments multifamily units future, as well as existing master plans as conditional use only in all zoning districts throughout the city.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
If this is approved, then will the apartment ban be lifted?
Yes, it will be when it... Yeah, the moratorium would be lifted at that point.
It expires, I think there's a couple of weeks left and 60 days on, in regards to the moratorium.
Well, once this is, once this is signed off on, it would be moot point anyway, really. I mean, we could, you know...
But we might make a motion to lift it tonight, just to make it clear.
Upon approval of this motion. Mr. Goodwin.
So Mr. Hager, who proposed, came before us earlier, he could come back, zoning plans...
Yes. Anyone else? Councilman? Okay. Do, we have a motion? We had, did we get a second? Ms. McGrew made the second? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
So do we need a motion to lift the moratorium? So moved.
Have a motion, Ms. Wilson, to lift the moratorium, second. Mr. Goodwin, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for that motion. Okay. Under New Business, Mr. Pepper's Discussion of Professional Services to Review City of Canton Information Technology System.
Yes. As Mayor and council knows, we made some changes in our IT department. And before we move forward in the hiring process in the IT department, I think it is very important that we reach out to a third party to come in and do a complete audit of our technology system. That will allow us the opportunity to ask the right questions and make sure that we have someone on board that understands our systems as they exist and can also help us with any deficiencies that we might have in our... us with any deficiencies that we might have in our system. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Ingram and I have sat down with a couple of, um, consultants in the Atlanta area that specialize in municipal IT, and those proposals are included in the agenda package. Um, I'm not going to ask you to vote on those, um, because it falls within my limit of spending, but I did want to let you know that we will be moving forward with one of those two benders here in the next, uh, few days, so that we can have that done for the citizens.
Okay. What else?
Under city manager's report, I, I'm, I'm not going to report on anything.
Good. Very good, very good, thank you. Um, the next item we need is to adjourn to executive session to discuss potential litigation. Have a motion, and Mr. Goodwin made the second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And we will not be coming back out for any further action. Thank you.
Okay.
That's one aside.
Okay, you go to her now?
Yeah.
Oh, it can, because they...
Huh?
Oh, no.
Yeah, it's...
Did we change it? Did we change the word, right?
Not on that one. No, I don't...